Think we should be in charge.
For our city manager to.
Got it.
He might be able to.
He might be able to, let's see.
Oh, hey, look at that.
It's ready.
Amazing. Really pleased to be here this evening. Thank you so much for having me. This is a version of a presentation that we share quarterly with mayors and city managers in our office. We'll keep legislative updates as brief as I can. And then I know that we were also asked to just talk about citizen engagement, especially in this moment. So happy to share some tips there. I wanted to talk first about updates to Michigan's red flag law. This was my first bill ever signed into law. Took me five years in in office to get it done. ERPO, extreme risk protection orders, allow loved ones, family members, first responders to work with a judge to have firearms temporarily confiscated from an individual who is deemed an immediate risk to themselves or others. This is a very narrow use case, and it is typically for those who are in the midst of a mental health crisis. We heard testimony about veterans suffering from PTSD, from those who were suicidal, and in instances of domestic violence. So the law has now been in effect for a year, and we got our first report back from SCIO. And there were 321 petitions in the first year, and we actually had, I want to highlight just one use in nearby Royal Oak, where our police chief utilized an extreme risk protection order for a resident who had previously been a professional football player, suffered from CTE, was going through a mental health crisis, had barricaded himself into his household with his wife and young children. They were able to utilize an extreme risk protection order with the court to seize a lot of the weapons that he had stockpiled in that moment, deescalate the situation, and the resident is now in mental health therapy. So this is an example of the Oakland County Core Program, the coresponders program working in partnership with our law enforcement to ensure that a dangerous situation doesn't become much worse, and that people who need mental health care get access to the care that they need. One thing that is unique about Michigan's law versus other states is we considered the incident of minors, and that is something that's not addressed in other states. So young people who may be making threats against their classmates on social media or for their siblings. So there were six incidents in Michigan over the past year of an extreme risk protection order being used in a home with a minor. And our law gives the judge the flexibility to either order those firearms be temporarily confiscated from the home, or to help educate the parents on safe locks and storage so that the weapons are not accessible by minors. There were also notably four incidents of red flag laws being used with law enforcement officers. So what we know is our law enforcement officers are not immune to mental health issues. There was one officer who was expressing suicidal thoughts, and three others who were in the midst of domestic violence incidents with their partners. But working well, we've had great feedback from law enforcement, from the courts, and from family members. So really, really proud to know that in its first year, this law has certainly saved lives, and happy to report that back. One update, thank you very much. There are nine bills. The change of power happened in Michigan. Over the first two years, from 2022 on, Democrats controlled the governor's office, the state house, and the state senate. But as of the election at the end of the year, power changed over in the state house, so we are now in divided government. There were nine bills that were not previously sent to the governor under Speaker Joe Tate, and new Speaker Hall had decided not to send those bills to the governor. So in probably what is an unprecedented moment here in the state of Michigan, the Senate sued the House, so took Matt Hall to court because the Constitution makes very clear that the legislature shall present bills passed by the legislature to the governor. It does not give leeway to any member of the legislature to decide whether or not to send those bills. So we just got a court ruling back. Judge ruled in the Senate's favor and said that the speaker should present those bills to the governor, but stopped short of ordering those bills be sent. So more to come. But one thing, again, I think for the local municipality that's of interest, is it would expand who is eligible for the Michigan State Police Pension Program to more law enforcement officers and corrections officers. We know that that's a crisis here in the state. And it would increase employer funding for teachers' health insurance. So without these bills going to the governor, we've heard from a lot of teachers in our community who are paying upwards of $9,000 additional dollars per year in health insurance premiums without these bills being sent to the governor's desk. Happy to answer any questions on this, but we passed the earned paid sick time and minimum wage laws. So for a little bit of background, in 2018, one fair wage collected enough signatures for a ballot initiative to get onto the ballot that would have guaranteed earned paid sick time in the state of Michigan at 72 hours, and increased the minimum wage to $15 an hour. The legislature in 2018 adopted that language and amended it, which the Supreme Court later ruled unconstitutional. The legislature does have the option of adopting ballot initiatives, but they cannot amend it before enacting it into law. So this was ruled to go into effect this year. We heard a lot of feedback from small business owners, from advocates, about really how to implement this law. Ballot initiative language is very minimal, so it doesn't consider a lot of the administrative challenges of putting a law into effect. So as of now, all Michiganders are guaranteed 72 hours of paid leave if they are full-time employees. That is scalable. If you are a part-time employee, it is proportionate with the hours that you work, and small businesses are required to provide 40 hours per year of paid sick leave. This does not roll over. That was a question that we got from many small businesses. And there are some exemptions that I won't read through here. And for the minimum wage, the minimum wage will increase to $15 an hour by January 1, 2027. The ballot initiative did consider completely eliminating the tipped credit, so that is something for servers, bartenders, anybody who's in a tipped industry. Employers are allowed to pay a subminimum wage so long as tips make up at least the minimum wage. So nobody in the state of Michigan is allowed to be paid a subminimum wage. One of the negotiations was to keep some version of the tip credit in place. There was fear from many small business owners that tipping would go away if the tip credit were to be eliminated, so we got to a cap of 50%. We are now starting the budget process for the cycle. I have listed up here, I'm not going to read through all of them, but from 2023 through the 2025 budget cycle, I was able to help secure tens of millions of dollars for our district, including for Pleasant Ridge, and that was a stark contrast to, yes, thumbs up, it was a great few years. Stark contrast to my first four years in office, serving in the minority and not as a member of the appropriations committee, where my big win one year was $50,000 for Berkeley. So comparatively, we're doing really well. We're bringing a lot of our taxpayer dollars back into our community, investing in things like senior centers, infrastructure, revitalizing the Mary Grove Conservancy, and so much more, supporting our seniors. As we head into this next budget year, we are in a very different place, and I just wanted to clarify that for the city as we move forward. We no longer have the $9 billion surplus that was largely made up of COVID-19 relief dollars. Those dollars were one-time funds. It was use it or lose it. So it was important for us, as we prioritize, to make sure all of those dollars that we received from the federal government came back into our communities. We are also very candidly, very concerned about proposed cuts to the federal budget. The state budget here in Michigan is made up 42% of federal funding. And I sit on the appropriations committee. When the governor presented her budget recommendation, we had one of my colleagues in the House remark, "Is this the year we are finally going to cut our addiction to federal funds?" I made a point on record to clarify, these are our federal dollars. They are our taxpayer dollars from our residents that go to Washington that we fight really hard to get back. Michigan is what's known as a donor state. We actually pay more in federal taxes than we receive, whereas there are many southern states who receive more than the taxpayer dollars that they pay to Washington. So as we head into this budget cycle, we're keeping a very, very close eye on what is happening on the federal level. I know they are working on maybe passing a continuing resolution tonight in the US Congress and the Senate, but that may really change what we have to put forward in our budget process. So as we consider for the city, for Pleasant Ridge, what your budget asks and priorities are, my ask would be, we're not going to see the types of funding results that we saw over the last two cycles. Unfortunately, I wish that were true, but I'm asking that we prioritize the real necessities, and the more information that you can give our office about the project, the need, if there are any matching dollars that really helps us as I head into negotiations, and we figure out what type of budget we are going to be working with moving forward. Just one fine point that I want to put on this before we move on. There has been news from the federal government that the Federal Department of Education is slated to be eliminated. We saw news today that members of the Department of Education have received orders that they will be out of a job within a week. And what that means for Michigan, Michigan receives about $2 billion annually from the Federal Department of Education to fund things like special education programs, disability programs, civil rights programs within the state. Our state rainy day fund currently is at a balance of $2.7 billion. That is the highest amount we've ever had in our state rainy day fund. So if we were to lose that from the school aid fund, we would be able to backfill that and almost completely wipe out the rainy day fund, and that would only be for one year. And that's not factoring in other budget areas like MDHHS, Medicare, Medicaid, housing, all of the other things that we rely on federal funding for. Some of my priorities heading into 2025, I chair the Senate Economic and Community Development Committee, and something that I have been working on very closely with John Demus, who's a Republican from northern Michigan, is compelling the state to create a 10-year comprehensive economic development strategy. Believe it or not, we do not have one in the state of Michigan, and many states don't either. This is a relatively new process that states like Virginia, Pennsylvania have begun to go through to understand, what's your unique value proposition as a state, and how are we really promoting economic development that makes sense for us and our residents while highlighting our attributes as a region and as a state? So more to come there. We're also working on, this is likely less relevant for Pleasant Ridge, given the size of the city, but we have multiple municipalities throughout our district that are large enough to warrant maybe one down, more than one downtown development authority. State law right now only allows you to really recognize one DDA. So we are working with MML on potential legislation that would give municipalities the flexibility, if you have multiple downtown corridors, that you would actually be able to designate multiple DDAs with all of the benefits that go along with it. Last but not least that I will highlight, Rep. Price introduced legislation related to Woodward Road noise last year. It fell short of getting all the way through the final process. She does plan to reintroduce this legislation this year, working with some of her Republican colleagues in the state house. We've already started to get emails asking, "Where is this bill? Why hasn't it been introduced yet?" Rep. Price and I have decided that we want to make sure the votes are there before it gets up. So I'm working with my colleagues in the Senate, so hopefully it gets through the House when it gets over to the Senate, that my colleagues understand this is a local control issue. This is a very unique issue to us that is not particularly relevant in other areas of the state, and to give our law enforcement the flexibility they need to enforce road noise. Governor Whitmer presented the state of the state, where she focused on reducing costs, jobs, and competitiveness, public health, and infrastructure. One thing of note is that this was a very, very high-level speech, so we've got a link on our website for folks available if you want to watch it. But this starts the process, along with the budget cycle, of the legislature responding with our policy proposals and our budget for the year. As I mentioned, we are watching federal funding issues. One thing that is an ask, if you see programs or issues within the community that are being directly impacted by a federal funding freeze or some news from the federal government, please share those examples with us. We are working very closely with our federal partners and our state partners as we head into the budget cycle to understand the real impacts, and we don't know what we don't know. So as you see issues, please reach out to our office. Elizabeth's contact information is on this slide. We've had a lot of events in the district. I know we've got some residents who mentioned coming out for one of my coffee hours. People are very engaged right now. I've had two town hall coffee hour events over just the last week, one with Representative McDonald and one with Representative Price. Both have been overflow. We typically get five to 12 people who come out for these. We love seeing those five to 12 people. But we had in Birmingham, over 100 people, the Birmingham Library, it was overflow into the hallway. And this is at Leon and Lulu in Clausen, which if you've ever been in there, is a store, so they weren't necessarily designed for a large event. We've done an event there in the past that has had maybe 12 people sitting around couches. More than 200 people came out to this.
I was there. That was a very fun way to like shop and.
Shop and engage with with your local government.
Stimulate the local economy.
And certainly stimulate the local economy. And so just huge thanks, as always, to our local small business owners who are amazing. I was so nervous when I saw how many people were walking in, but Leon and Lulu was wonderful in accommodating us. But I wanted to bring this up because people are really engaged and anxious and nervous. They see a lot in the news right now that can feel very, very overwhelming. So we shared some tips with a lot of the people who came out on just, what do I do? How do I engage with this process? How can I respond to the news in a way that is helpful and not overwhelming? So we've put together a few tips here that we've learned from our side of things, not only for members of the commission, but for the public viewing as well. Things that we've seen work effectively, get to know who your elected officials are. One of the things I encourage everybody who attended our events to do is Google, use Ballotpedia, who represents me at every level, and just sign up for their email lists. Follow your legislators on social media if they use it. Write email or call, show up, and join an association or group that advocates on an issue that impacts you. Something that we've always highlighted, we have a constituent named Jean O'Shea. She is a member of the Junior League of Birmingham. Her key issue is domestic violence. She's a domestic violence survivor, and we've gotten to know her over the last six years. This is her core issue. She contacts us very regularly, and I think focusing your efforts and energy on one issue will save your energy, particularly for members of the public, so they don't feel like they have to respond to every issue. We need to save our peace in this moment. Things that are less effective, form letters or emails. When you see change.org petitions, I know members of the commission likely know this, but we receive a lot of form emails. In my first year in office, I made it a point to try to respond to every single one of these, and we ended up getting screamed at by a gentleman who did not remember that he sent us one. He was angry to learn that we had his contact information and told us never to call again. So these are helpful. We tally them, but we do not respond to them. Don't threaten or harass your elected officials. I feel like that really needs to be said in this moment. DMing or tagging your elected officials on social media. I think social media is a great way to get information out, but I can tell you from my end, my biggest fear is that I miss you when you contact me. So if you've tagged me, I may not see it. We actually had a constituent say, "I've contacted you about this a dozen times. We looked for an email. We looked for a voicemail. We didn't have it." She was tagging me on Twitter, and I just missed it because my notifications are a hot mess, and I don't try to navigate through them. Crowding in-person events. If you come and visit us in Lansing, we encourage you to do so. We've seen some groups try to swarm offices with 50 or so people. That overwhelms staff, so please designate a few people to come and have an effective meeting. And that's our contact information, and that's what I have for you tonight. Thank you so much. Tried to fly through a lot as quickly as I possibly could.
That's a quick question. You were talking about the Department of Education, which we've all been sort of following what's going. And I had heard that the, in the House right now, that the leadership is also trying to cut back the funding for education. So what, how, I mean, because if it's getting cut there and here, what's going to happen?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the State House proposed a really kind of secretive budget that they have presented as a stopgap budget, basically a continuing resolution within the state level, which is not something that we typically do. The budget that was proposed and passed out of the State House would cut $5 billion from education. If we add that to $2 billion that we would lose from the federal government, that is more than 25% of our total education funding. We would not be able to make that up. We do not have a rainy day fund to backfill that. It also cuts a lot of essential services, and it's being presented, you know, if I may take a point of privilege very disingenuously to say that it is to prevent a government shutdown. It is March right now. Our budget is due constitutionally on October 1. We are nowhere near the end of the budget process, so I can tell you, Commissioner, that this budget will not move within the Senate, but it does worry me that this is kind of the positioning that the State House is taking. So again, I encourage people, as you hear things like this, contacting your elected officials really does make a difference. To talk about the importance of education funding, of local funding, this is going to be a tough year, I think, between the federal government and the challenges between the dynamics of the State House and the state senate. And there was also, I have not seen this written, but have also heard that the State House plans to introduce legislation to repeal the State Department of Education as well, so taking a playbook out of what's happening on the federal level. And again, you know, we don't have backfill on the state level. We have the funding that we have. We are constitutionally required to pass a balanced budget. We cannot run deficits, and those cuts would be devastating to our communities.
That is. Are are the water, the lead service line things staying in place, the requirements for the replacement of lead service lines?
The legislation is. My concern, as it has always been, is making sure there's adequate funding to fulfill those requirements. What we know is that there is no safe level of lead for human consumption, and if we knew what we know now, then would we have built our infrastructure differently? Of course. So I will continue to fight to make sure that that funding is there, and is a great example that I'll take back with me from our communities to say, "We can't lose this funding, because this is a really expensive undertaking, literally and figuratively, for for our communities to to process."
Thank you.
Yeah, we're extremely fortunate to have leaders that we have in Lansing and Washington, DC from this area right now. We're very well represented. They do need our input, though. So if there's something that you feel passionate about, I also recommend, in addition to their list, sign up for the newsletters or the notices from the committees of the things that you're passionate about, and you'll know what they're talking about every week, and then nothing's a surprise to you that it is coming up for vote. You can see the conversation. You can even go, as I have on noise and other things, go to Lansing and sit in on the committee meeting and see how that is rolling out. But thank you for coming today and giving us your view on everything. This is great.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for having me.
This was great. This presentation was great. And I think you said that you present something, what, monthly to city commissioners, or not city commissioners, managers and mayors?
Yes.
Is there a way that the general public can see the version of the monthly?
Certainly. Yeah, that's great feedback. So we started doing this meeting during COVID, and we had originally opened it up to all commissioners and council members, and then we were told we would be in violation of OMA, so we had to scale it back to mayors and city managers, but we can make these presentations available publicly on our website so that everybody can view them.
Are they currently, or is it just for potentially future? Like, are they currently available on the website?
Currently, they're not, but we can add them. That's a great, great flag.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Public items that are not on the agenda. Yes, please.
I'm Liz Slager. I live at 32 Woodside. I grew up at Three Woodside. I think my whole life, there's 12 years I didn't live in Pleasant Ridge. This afternoon, I live on the north side of Woodside, backing up my, I have the wall behind me, as some of us, and retired, so I'm home. Literally, the pictures on my wall started doing this. Now, when 696 went through, my parents were given a letter written by the city stating, anybody that lives in, you know, backing up to this, keep track of your basements, walls, you know, your house, for any damage that might happen. Has the city, well, they haven't, because I haven't seen it. Could the city put something out for us? I would feel better knowing that the city is behind me if I do have issues. When I called today, they were like, "Yeah, well, here's the email," and that's fine, and I took care of the email. But I think this is also a city issue. As far as Little Liz going to, you know, M.DOT, they're going to go, you know, if the city goes to them and says, "Hey, listen, we've had these issues." I'm just wondering if you've taken any consideration in doing anything, if you would please take something. We have a lot of young people in the city that don't know what to look for. Having been through this with my parents, I have a really good idea. And, you know, I was expecting noise. I was expecting, you know, some, just because I live by the expressway, I was expecting some tremors, but to literally see the pictures on my walls, like I had an earthquake, is extreme, could potentially cause damage. I know I'm not the only one, and I really would plead with the city to put something out to the residents that have this issue, that are going to be putting up with this for the next two years. Give us some things to be looking out for. Let us know that you have our backs, and give us the resources to to reach out and say, you know, this is what's happening. It's going to happen. There's going to be noise. There's going to be reverberations. Our houses are going to shift. I just would like to know that the city's behind me, and when I called today, that wasn't really the feeling I got.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, staff, viewers. Ted Zachary, 68, Devonshire. I have some real good news. American Sign Language is going well in Pleasant Ridge. We have five participants now, and we have a lot of fun. We were supposed to meet just for one hour, but sometimes we go hour and a half or hour and 45 minutes.
Time just to see everybody present, but then, you know, the whole crowd came who, like, a lot of people who weren't artists, and it just really brought people together in a great way to see what all of our neighbors are up to. So think about that is, save the date on Friday, April 11, at 5:30 PM, and it'll be a really good time. The Arts Council has been working quickly towards putting their framework plan together. That should be done soon. Nunez Design has been working hard and did a great presentation at our last meeting on February 26, and our next meeting will be the third Wednesday of March. So come by then, we'll be, 4:30, we'll be right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few words about the school district. Last week, they had their State of the School District meeting and there were people from Ferndale Pleasant Ridge present. It was a great turnout, lots of good information about the school district and they had exhibits from various grades of schools, students on display. You'll probably hear a lot more over the next couple of months about the millage, or excuse me, the bond issue that is going for the school district as well. And, oh, Mark is here.
Yeah, I'll give you some more.
Yes, please, sorry. I wasn't paying attention, sorry. Would you like to give some more, Mark?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so State Districts last week, great opportunity for everybody to come see New Lower, but then we also got folks on a bus to go see the high school and the middle school to see the difference of what bond dollars do. Superintendent Hibler also did just a, you know, great presentation on what's happening, but then also really explaining, explaining the bond, which will be on May 6th. And then there will be sessions on April 12th and April 19th on more informational as well as canvassing. So we'll have more information on those pieces. Quickly run through some of the really exciting things that have been happening. The seventh, eighth grade band participated in the MSBOA Band Festival last weekend. The seventh grade band earned all first division ratings and the eighth grade band also did, which is really exciting, which is A and A plus, you know, the highest quality, just continuing the, the great tradition of bands at Ferndale Middle School and High School. Last Friday night, the Ferndale High School Girls Basketball Team clinched the MHSAA Division Two District 60 Championship in a laugher, 62 to 28. They're going to be going to the regional tournament. Yeah, so it's going to be very exciting. And then two weeks ago, not sure if you were able to make it, but Ferndale High School hosted the First Robotics Competition. There were about 50 schools all came. It was absolutely amazing. Like, the high school basically transformed into like a convention center where the gym was like where they were doing all the battles and just watching the kids from each school just go nuts. And then, you know, that main hallway out by the auditorium, basically each school had a little pod and they were all just doing their work. Amazing they put it on, amazing that the electric all worked. It was like, it was crazy to, crazy to watch, but, you know, first opportunity that we've had to, to host First Robotics, so want to continue to have it. It was just a really, really great event. And then just some upcoming dates, open enrollment now for, for all in district residents. Newsies opened last week and it will be going on 14th, 16th, yep. So if you can get a chance, go, go see the amazing kids there. And then next week, next Tuesday, University High School will be hosting their Black Excellence Celebration from 5 to 7 at University High School, so if you can make it, so. Any questions? Cannot talk about, I have no answers on the budget. Senator Morrow did, I have no, that's a, you know, I can't say, you know, that Superintendent Hibler and her team are thinking through, you know, what, what all this, this happens, because obviously it's, everybody's just heads spinning.
For sure.
All right. Excellent.
I'm so glad you got up.
No.
Can I ask you?
Yes, please.
So with the robotics, are there events like that frequently? Maybe not as large, but?
I, I think it's just, this is like where they all come and do their overall competition as far, as far as I'm aware. But it was all just like, you know, local high schools that kind of come together.
So it was the high school level?
Yes, exactly.
That's very cool. Because I would think it'd be fun for some families to take kids to go sort of.
Yeah, I mean, I tried to get my 10-year-old and she was just like, no, but like I, it was just, because I mean, just, just the, the atmosphere was just like, it was just like the buzz in the high school was just, it was just really, really cool.
That's really cool. It's such a big school that I could see all those.
And just, and just the, I couldn't believe just like the chants and it was like, it was like a European soccer match level of just like the fervor of the kids.
Was there smoke bombs?
It was like, you were almost like, almost DCFC level, yeah, that's, but it was just like, they were all dressed, you know, in shirts and everything and it was just really, really cool to watch.
That's really cool.
That is awesome.
Do you know how long Newsies runs?
So this weekend is, is when it wraps up.
Is it?
Yes. So hopefully you can, you can make it.
That's great. And then the, what did you say is the UHS thing?
Oh, so it's a UHS celebration, Black Excellence Celebration. So spotlighting kids and other folks in the school of what's, what's happening there.
And good luck to all of us on this budget stuff.
It's hitting everybody in every direction, but yeah, the education stuff is very, very frightening.
Thank you for stepping up for the school board.
No, excited. Got my taste here of planning commission of getting back in public service, so, but the school board's been, been excellent. So Jackie couldn't make it today, has been a great mentor of mine, so please let me know. Obviously, you have more, more things I can help out with. Happy to, happy to help.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Onto the planning commission. Wish you a like-o.
Thanks, Mayor. So tonight, we are going to be blessed with McKenna presenting, I think, the master plan. So I hope everybody's going to adopt it. Being adopted concurrently or in parallel with the planning commission, which is already adopted. So, and then from there, really, it's going to be that our commission will, will help set the agenda for the planning commission on, in my estimation, the short-term rentals and the accessory dwelling units. So once we kind of set their direction, they can sink their teeth in. The next planning commission meeting is April 28th, so like a month and a half, the fourth Monday of April, 7 o'clock in these chambers. There are two open positions and one of the folks, Alex Belec, he's the chair, so we're going to be appointing a new chair.
And I've got a field trip list on this email, I'll show, or I'll read a few just at the end here and you can find those online. The Easter egg decorating is on Thursday, April the 17th at 6:00 PM. Participants will be required to bring their own dozen hard-boiled eggs. We'll provide the rest and it'll be a ton of decorating fun if you're interested in that.
No budget for eggs.
Might be cheaper to send them to Cedar Point or something.
Can we paint squash?
Ted would be, Ted would be pleased. The citywide garage sale is also coming up and that's Saturday, May 10th and registration begins online or you can come into the community center or city hall on April 7th. Kirsten, please take a note. I have a note here for you for the city hall, it says, please make a note for city hall. The, you're welcome. The spring register will be in mailboxes and posted online at the end of March. Spring registration begins on Monday, April 7th and we have another star-studded event lineup for the spring, summer of 2025. And of course, the, the folks in the rec department are excited to see everyone out. To give you a few things that they got going on in the summer program, there's, just to name a few, Top Golf, Extreme Gym and Great Skate, the Detroit Zoo, the Yogurt Station, they walk there, robot garage and movies, creative arts and bowling, et cetera, et cetera. So there are a ton of exciting things. And then our next meeting is the end of April, which would be the last Wednesday, which is April the 30th, is when the rec commission will meet. And as we go through, we'll be, as Commissioner Lenko mentioned, voting on adopting the, the planning and also the parks and rec plan as well. So just a couple highlights and things that were taken from it. First of all is that residents are confident in the recs program and parks. That's something that going through all the surveys and the data, it's really refreshing to see that, how we stack rank and folks are really happy with what we have.
Winning.
Yes, yes, we do. So it's, that's where it can be a little tricky is to how do you improve on an award-winning type deal? So that said, what the rec will be doing or voted to put forth, working through this plan, is implementing minor features to the parks and different benefits to enhance those parks and for the community. So little tweaks, to use one of your words, Mayor Scott, little tweaks to improve what we already have and continue to make them even better. I think that's it.
That was a lot.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
It's all good.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, governmental reports. Here comes the cop.
Good evening. I usually end my time up at the podium with lock your doors. We're going to start off with lock your doors because I have some other things I need to get to. So whether it's your house doors, your car doors, please lock your doors. We did have two cars that were broken into, and I shouldn't say broken into, that were opened. Someone left the doors unlocked this past month. We do have video. Over my time here, we get a mix of things. Sometimes it's kids coming through the neighborhood and just seeing opportunity. Some people are professionals. This one was, they're just being opportunistic, but in a car. So they rolled up, jumped out of the car, checked the car door, see what they could take and they're back in that car and it's all of 20 seconds or so. So please lock the doors. Luckily, there was nothing, you know, of great value taken, but it solves most of our problems if we just lock the doors. I had been big on telling you guys about the scams that go on, heard of some more. I mean, there's just different plays on it, but wanted to point out to some of our residents that a lot of people are being preyed on in chat rooms and Facebook groups, especially for widowed people. It's just a target-rich environment for people that are lonely. Reaching out to those people, there's all kinds of stuff going on, but heard one this week where money was actually, after a short period of time, they decided they were in love and I'm going to put money into your retirement account and dropped hundreds of thousands of dollars into this person's retirement account. And then shortly after that, like the next day was, you know what, I just had a medical issue, I just gave you hundreds of thousands of dollars into your retirement account. Can you please send me, you know, $50,000? The money went, guess what? That money for the retirement account wasn't real money, it bounced, they figured it out and now that person's out $50,000. So just be very, very leery of this. If you have any questions at all, we are more than happy to track that down. Lieutenant Tyler is in charge of our detective bureau. We will, we will make some phone calls and we will find out. We can't tell you if you're actually in love or not, but we'll, we'll work on the other stuff. Commissioner Lenko talked about the short-term rentals. I've been working with the city on that. We have a list, our officers are keeping a watchful eye on those. Had a couple issues, but we're working through that. We actually spoke with one of the owners of these houses today. Then what else do I have here? Sorry. So I don't know if the commission knows, but we did purchase an EV for the police department. So yep, we're going to go with an F-150 Lightning. That actually should, the build should start on that two days from now. We've been waiting eagerly to get that. We got our EV charger up. It'll be out back for our police cars. Get that as soon as the ground thaws a bit, get that installed. So hopefully, we're thinking in May, I don't know, mid-May is what I'm hoping. You'll see a EV on the road and our officers behind it. So we're looking forward to that. We did have one car that got hit, so that car just went goodbye and we're down to one last car right now, so we're, we're waiting for that car to come in.
Ready.
Last thing is 364 days ago, I was standing here and you were standing, sitting there when I got sworn in as chief. So it's been a year. I just wanted to say thank you to the commission, thank you to the admin, thank you to the residents for all the support. The love that I received over this past year has just been unbelievable. I had been stopped in the parking lot for one lady and she said, our whole family was praying that you were going to get it because, she said, do you remember when you found my daughter? And I, a lot of things have happened here in my, my 25 years with the city. And I said, I don't. And she goes, she got lost at the Roosevelt Fair and you found her. And I, I think it was 2001, I think it was literally like the week that I got hired here.
Wow.
And so thank you for the outpouring of support that I received and thank you for everything over the past year. And just want you guys to know that you guys have a great group of officers that have been super supportive, as you guys see them and wave to them as they drive around the city. You, you couldn't have a better group of people, so thank you.
Thank you.
Other than that, I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you very much.
You're a part of what helps make the city great.
And we'll remind people to lock all their doors.
Yes.
And turn on lights.
The lights don't work. I caught someone going through and my, my motion light went on and they just kept coming. They, they just kept.
We'll find some shire ones.
Yeah, no, they just kept going and my neighbor was unlocked.
Before the last commission meeting, Officer Barokie came up to me and he said, hey, are you doing the commission meeting? I said, yeah. He said, could you do me a favor? You tell people to lock the doors? I said, apparently you aren't watching the commission meeting. Because it's every commission meeting.
I do, it's the last thing I do before I go to bed. It's like, it's just.
You do it like five times.
Me too, actually. And now I've become a little obsessed about it, but yes, I keep doing it. And I keep a key in my bedroom now. I'm crazy.
I used to have a car that I couldn't lock because the lock was broken. And fortunately also, the center console lid was also broken. So whenever you tried to open it, it would fly off into the backseat. So I always knew when someone had been through my car. When I got in and the center console lid was in the backseat, well, it happened again. You'd be amazed, it happens everywhere, all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I would park in front of the, my house here in Pleasant Ridge and it probably happened 10 times overnight.
Oh, my God.
Just in front of my own house. So.
Yeah, just lock them.
It's a real thing.
I love parking in a garage.
I find if your car is locked, it's not, you know, people move on, so it's not like they're, well, that's a good thing. I mean, they're, they're not breaking windows to get into your car. If it's locked, they move on, so.
I also had my, my window broken in said car.
Oh, well.
But that was downtown, so.
Yeah.
We've only had two over the past, you know, 20 years where they actually broke through the window.
You clearly just have really good stuff in your car, but in general.
Doors unlocked!
Probably a bunch of ponchkeys in there.
That'll do it.
Lock your doors.
Right.
Lock your doors.
All right, I think we'll move on to the consent agenda. May we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second.
Any comments? Guess we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. The master plan and recreation plan.
Yes. So Jane Dixon from McKenna Associates is here. She's been the project manager, leading us through this process for both plans. We're at the final stage now. I'll just, real briefly, we have to do a public hearing here for the Parks and Rec Plan. That's required per state procedures to have this be a MDNR certified rec plan. The master plan has been through a public hearing at the planning commission already, so at this point, you do not need to do a public hearing for that, just approval. And those will be separate actions, as is in your, your wording. And with that, Jane?
Well, thank you. And thank you all. I feel like it was a little over a year ago that we were starting this process and it's been wonderful to work with the community and the commissioners of the planning commission and the rec commission and all of you, so thank you. I'm excited for the adoption this evening. So just really quickly, I will, I'm going to keep this very high level. I'm happy to dive deeper into any topic you might want to. I know you had a lot on your agenda, so I'm going to try and keep it efficient, but happy to discuss anything of interest. So just going to start with an overview of the planning process, looking at the topics that we covered through the master plan and the Parks and Recreation Plan, diving into the goals and those action items, and then talking about the adoption process thus far and what you all are being asked of tonight. So as you know, there were two plans, the citywide master plan and the Parks and Recreation Plan for 2025 through 2029. That's a five-year increment. The citywide master plan is typically a 10-year plan with a five-year review based off of the state's Planning Enabling Act. And that's really to provide a coordinated vision for the city to utilize and to guide future land use and other policies like accessory dwelling units, short-term rentals and sustainability opportunities as we've kind of widened the view of what a master plan can look at. That zoning plan is that formal framework to provide those action items to the planning commission, kind of their charge to fulfill the recommendations of the master plan. But it is not a legislative document. It does not have any sort of law or ordinance behind it. It is simply just recommendations and vision. The Parks and Recreation Plan inventories the existing facilities. It is based off of what the Michigan State DNR wants to see and also then on a larger level, highlights the opportunities for future improvements, you know, suggests what policies or programs should be implemented over the next five years. And this plan also included an analysis of sustainability and accessibility, with accessibility of sustainability and accessibility, with accessibility being both, can you walk and access the parks, but also is it providing services and opportunities for every type of user? So just really quickly, how are the plans used? They communicate the community's values. They create the historical record. You can look back and say, "At this point, this is what the community really viewed as important," and what the val, you know, what they valued at this moment. And then determine areas for further exploration, and also makes the city eligible for grants specifically with the Parks and Recreation Plan. Those grants are competitive, but with a document that you've submitted to the state, you are able to then apply for those grants. They, again, are not an obligation of any funding, so any suggestion of programs, policies, improvements, nothing is set in stone, and it's not meant to be inflexible. So everything in both plans is a starting point for 2025, and we know that things change. Really quickly, I know, I'm sure you've all heard many of the events that went on in this process. We did kick this off in April of last year, and have had multiple points of interaction with the community through the last year, and opportunities for input, starting with more of the strategic visioning, and then all the way through the draft review period that we've just completed. So just to highlight some of the key events, as, these are the public-facing events, and not including the touchpoints we have with the Planning Commission and the Rec Commissions, but the visioning session in May of 2024, the, at the community, at the community center was, I think, a really big success. And then the survey and online comment map kind of was concurrent with that part of the process, and that set the tone of the whole process. So I appreciated it as well, because some of the things we threw out as exploration, like Hustle Park, what should we do with Hustle Park, and very quickly heard, nothing. We don't want you to do anything. Great, off the table, and then move forward with talking about more detailed actions later in the process. And that included roundholder, roundtable stakeholder discussions with teens, with the garden clubs, with parents. So there was a lot of different groups that were kind of focused, you know, smaller discussions, smaller groups at that point. And that added more context to some of those strategic ideas that we heard in May. We also went to the Ice Cream Social in July, which was the best event, in my opinion. I get to stand outside. It's great. And that was really focused on the parks and rec opportunities, and figuring out what were the highest priorities for that plan, as well as some discussion on the ADUs and the short-term rentals. At that juncture, we knew that those were gonna be kind of the two major items for the master plan. And then Policy Prioritization Workshop in October kind of finalized the pre-drafting period of the engagement, and that's when we kind of went through goals and asked everyone to vote. We went through policy recommendations and asked everyone for, to vote and provide input. And that was really valuable to validate kind of everything that we had heard thus far in the process. So the technical analysis, it's all in the plan, so you can, you know, get all of the background. I'm just going to do a high-level overview of the kind of sections that we covered in the master plan, starting with Woodward Avenue. And as part of that policy prioritization engagement process, we talked about what kind of height would be allowable on Woodward in the future, what it might look like in terms of if there were small redevelopments to happen, if certain parcels did come under different ownership. And then that also ties in largely to the transportation component, because one thing we did hear over and over was the concerns about crossing Ten Mile, crossing Woodward, and the safety issues, especially for people on bikes and for people just walking or running. There's definitely limitations with that, but we continue to recommend that advocacy occurs from you all and the community for partnership on those MDOT and road commission projects. But within the city-owned streets, we also made some recommendations about crossing improvements and things of that nature, really looking at both streets for roads and cars, but also for the non-motorized network. And then, I know housing is kind of the staple of the community, and something we discussed at the kickoff, and it's what makes Pleasant Ridge special, and the neighborhoods and the people. It's what we heard was, we love the neighborhood, we love the community, and how do we preserve that while still allowing the flexibility for the modern changes that are, are going to come and the trends that occur. And that's really where the discussion of short-term rentals came into play. And I've, I put the action items, so we'll talk more about what the recommendations looked like, look like later in the presentation. And then same with accessory dwelling units. And overwhelmingly, the public input was supportive of accessory dwelling units with some limitations and guidelines. And then for the short-term rentals, it's a little bit like Pandora's box. We know it's already in the community. How do we create the guidelines that need to be in place at this point? We also have did an analysis of aging in place and opportunities for the city to continue to support people who want to age in their homes and stay in the community or stay close to the community, and finished with some sustainability and infrastructure analysis. And this map just kind of highlights the fantastic tree cover that the city gets to enjoy. For the Parks and Recreation Plan, the state also provides pretty distinct guidelines on what should be included in this plan. So we do the community demographics, and that's part of the master plan as well. We go out and look at every single facility. We inventory everything. We also then benchmark that to national averages based off of community size. We look at the programs, the partnerships, the opportunities for maintenance. And then above and beyond what the state requires, we also have included the sustainability opportunities within the parks, as well as, the state does require accessibility, that we rank every park, and, but we've expanded that out to look at what types of opportunities do people who might have sensory needs or different types of needs, what are they getting their needs met at the playgrounds and recreation facilities? All right. So I'm gonna go through these, not word for word, but the master plan's goals were kind of broken up to correspond to each of those chapters. And most of these are, I think, affirmations of values that you're all very aware of. Continuing safe and efficient transportation for everyone, making sure that targeted updates along Woodward, have mixed use, potentially two stories, looking at sustainability in terms of where native plantings and green infrastructure can occur, and then housing, what the traditional look of Pleasant Ridge is, and how to meet, maintain that while meeting any changing needs of the community, as well as, that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the aging-in-place discussion and assuring appropriate housing and support for those individuals. Again, I'm not gonna necessarily read every item, but this is the implementation. This is kind of, you know, the meat and potatoes of the plan, as well as the zoning plan. And some of the major items here, the codification of short-term rental standards in all residential districts that allow a certain proportion of properties to be registered as short-term rentals, so requiring that registration, and considering adding provisions that require occupancy of the property owner of some degree, so it's not simply an investment property. I know there might be some feasibility questions, and that's what the Planning Commission will definitely have to explore, as well as the accessory dwelling, the accessory dwelling units in the residential districts, creating the standards that ensure the appropriate scale and density, and accommodate sufficient off-street parking, so that we're not flooding streets if there's gonna be more people occupying homes, making sure that they, lots can really sufficiently support it. Some of the sustainability items are really just about impervious surface coverage and including more sustainable practices and guidelines. I think the city already does a great job with the tree plantings and building upon some of those successes. So those are kind of the major items for the master plan. And then for the Parks and Recreation Plan, the goals, as Commissioner Budnick kind of highlighted, people love the parks, and we're in a maintenance cycle, as Gainesboro has just had, kind of already had a renovation pretty recently. So ensuring kind of the continuation of all of the values that the Recreation Department already encapsulates, making sure that the recreation spaces are accessible and provide opportunity for age, all ages and abilities, the maintenance of the recreation facilities to continue the high standards, then low-impact enhancements to improve existing parks, specifically Hustle Park, that was one of the items that we really discussed a lot with the community, and then collaborating with the local recreation providers to continue to offer the variety of recreation programs that, there's such a long list. So from a system-wide kind of action plan for the Parks and Recreation, we heard a lot about wanting recycling bins, we, more garden club volunteers to help adopt parks and install some native plantings, installing bicycle repair facilities where appropriate, and then coupling that garden kind of volunteerism with some native plants, as I mentioned. And then the park-specific actions, again, minor tweaks, to use your term, and some of these things are in process, and looking at rebuilding the tennis courts. A lot of these items are repeats from park to park, so in terms of native flower gardens, more shade, a speaker system at the community pool was something that was desired, especially for swim meets, less about music, more about announcements. And then at Hustle Park, what we heard is low-impact improvements that would allow for a variety of play options, flexibility of that field space for small soccer nets or things of that nature, but more landscaping and more intentionality around how that park can be used. So that sums up the meat and potatoes of the presentation. Does anyone have any questions before I get into the adoption process? Okay?
No.
Yeah. So just really quickly, as the city manager mentioned, the master plan has gone to the Planning Commission, had a public hearing there on February 10th. That was after the 63-day public notice period that's required by the state, and that gets sent to all of the adjacent communities, the county. We did receive feedback from the county, and they gave it their blessing. And Oak Park also had sent comments that they did not have any comments or concerns, so that's always positive. And there were some comments from residents and planning commissioners, mostly around sidewalk access and some of the transportation items. And so we did, we kind of received those and integrate those into the plan as appropriate. For the Parks and Recreation Plan, there was a 30-day public comment period that actually extended beyond the 30-day, but the 30 days is the minimum required by the state. Then we did review the Recreation Commission comments, or we reviewed the resident comments with the Recreation Commission. I also included them in your packet, just because there is a public hearing this evening. There were only two comments, and I think one, you know, they were both pretty minor. So nothing major that came out of that part of the process. So for this evening, two distinct items, the master plan, just rece, you're receiving the Planning Commission's recommendation. They, they did a vote to approve the plan at the February 10th meeting, and there is a resolution to adopt the master plan. And then the Parks and Recreation Plan, the Recreation Commission also recommended the adoption of the Recreation Plan. The distinct piece is that we have to have a public hearing for that plan at the commission level, so to meet that MDNR requirement. And then after that public hearing has been opened and closed, you can pass the resolution to adopt the plans. So it's, it's been great. I really appreciate it. And, yeah.
It's really been interesting to follow it through, and the amount of feedback that we got from everyone, the amazing support we've gotten from your team.
Well, thank you.
You guys have been great.
Thank you.
Yeah, when you guys presented to us all as a group, it was really fun. Like, we could feel the energy. And it's like, it's been so neat to see it all come together in this document. It's really, we're the two documents.
Yeah. And the website, too. I know this week, and putting together the website, which is now on pleasantridgeplans.com, has been great, because it's a really user-friendly, attractive, but user-friendly way to get into the, to get into the plan without having to read all 80 pages of the master plan. So certainly, I encourage everyone, but thank you for doing that, too, because I think that's great.
Yeah, thank you. And I don't know, we had talked about pulling it up. It's Pleasant Ridge Plans, and it's, I think, a really interactive way to click through and figure out what you want to read about and what you're interested about, so.
And the website will be up for 10 years, right?
Yes. Yeah. So, and we'll figure out exactly how, we'll make sure all the links work and everything will be worked out.
But I checked it. I know it was broken for a minute, but I just checked it. It's back up and working, so it's all good.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. With that, I will open the public hearing. Going, going. Right, I know. With that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Yeah. Mayor, I move that the resolution adopting the 2025 through 2029 City of...
Oh.
I have an old one.
You have an old one?
Yep, yep. Excuse me, sorry.
No problem. 2025 through 2029 City of Pleasant Ridge Parks and Recreation Plan be approved.
Second. Any comments? Have a vote, please.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yep.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Yay. And second motion.
Great work, you guys.
Mayor, I move the resolution adopting the 2025 City of Pleasant Ridge Master Plan as presented at the Planning Commission public hearing held February 24th be approved.
Support. Any comments? All right, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Lanko?
Yep.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. That's awesome. Awesome.
Good job.
That was a lot of work.
It's really beautiful.
We all stayed for you, Jane. Now, you're done, and closed us down.
This, this really was a great process. I want to thank Jane and Paul and everyone at McKenna for, for leading us through this, did a great job. You know, we had our usual Pleasant Ridge turnout for the surveys. It's normal here, but, you know, having done this and knowing the survey results you typically get from much, much larger communities, you know, just really fantastic to see the, the amount of community involvement we have here. And it really, you know, creates a valid plan, gives us a lot of confidence in what we're implementing, because we did get a lot of really great input throughout the process. So, yeah, so I just want to thank the commission, thank the Planning Commission, thank the Recreation Commission, McKenna, all the residents who turned up. I know Tom and Jan, you were there for a lot of this, too. Yeah, it's, just, this is one of those feel-good moments.
Yes.
Plan well done.
Thank you, Jen. Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. Well, I think we'll go on to board and commission appointments. I think we need a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna try this.
Give it a try.
Do them all.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
Thank God.
Try, do them all. Okay.
It's not a quintet.
Mayor, I move the appointment of Jeff Hand and Gillian Oden to the full-term seats, and reappointment of Megan Takashima to the second full-term on the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority. The appointment of Catherine Russell and Katie Legrasso to full-term seats, and Kathleen Brady, Bradley to a partial-term seat, and the reappointment of Nicholas Zimes to a second full-term on the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission. The appointment of Kaia Scott and Alana Botson to full-term seats, and the reappointment of Dawn St. Aubin to first full-term on the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission. The appointment of John Telpos, am I saying that right, to a full-term seat on the Pleasant Ridge Board of Review, and, and the reappointment of Patrick Thompson and Gregory Wincop to the, to first full-term seats on the Pleasant Ridge Arts Council, all terms to expire March 31st, 2028.
Second. Any thoughts or comments?
Great, great candidates.
Great folks, and thanks to everyone that submitted their applications for these. And if it's something that you're interested in in the future... And if it's something that you're interested in in the future, you can submit again or submit now for future seats, because there's always something every year that pops up. So, thank you. Volunteers needed for, for everything.
Volunteers for everything.
And all these things, so, yeah.
And also, they are open to the public. I mean, I know, so if you ever want to come to a commission meeting, if you ever want to, you know, have your say and, and present something, I mean, they are open to the public, so.
I think we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. Okay, Oakdale Water Main bid approval.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. We bid out the Oakdale Water Main and Lead Service Line Replacement Project, received four bids back. The city engineer evaluated bids and is recommending that the project be awarded to FDM Contracting Incorporated. Excuse me, I apologize. In the amount of $1,439,594 and 25 cents. The project was bid. We are hap, it was close.
It was really close.
The price difference between DeAngelo, who of course did Kensington and has done all of our lead service line replacements to date, and we have great confidence and comfort with them, but they were just slightly more expensive than FDM Contracting. The good news is that DeAngelo is a subcontractor to FDM Contracting.
That's great.
And DeAngelo will be doing all of the lead service line replacements. So that's always the most sensitive part of these projects. Replacing the water main is straightforward, easy, I don't want to say easy, but straightforward. It's a, a process that doesn't cause a lot of disruption. Going into 70 or 80 residents' homes, into their basements, and replacing infrastructure through their basement, that's the part of the process that requires a good contractor. So fortunately, we know DeAngelo has done that in homes all across the city, over 100 lead service line replacements in Pleasant Ridge already. Very, very few issues. The issues that, that we have had with them have been very minor, and they've been very responsive to getting those taken care of. So we're, we're very happy DeAngelo is still on board and will be doing the lead service line replacement portion of this project, and we're looking forward, I guess, to getting this project going. You know, these first ones, we're prioritizing Kensington, Oakdale, because there's just, there's a lot of homes and there's a lot of lead service lines on these streets. So we get a lot of lead service line replacements built into this, because we obviously are under a-
Or under schedule.
...schedule to get these done. And so that's, you know, it's good that we're knocking out a lot of them, but it's a big lift coordinating and getting into, you know, all of these homes at once. Kensington went very well with DeAngelo. We're looking forward to the Oakdale project going very well as well. So when does it start? Probably spring or early summer. We will be sending out letters, having a pre-construction meeting to all residents on Oakdale. We'll be getting the access agreements so that, allowing us to go into the homes and do that replacement. So look forward for more information as we get that scheduled with the engineers and the contractor. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
So, well, the, while it's a different contractor, is the water main replacement process the same?
Yes, they will be doing the directional drilling.
Because that was absolutely incredible, the low impact that that had, considering, considering what they were doing.
Yes, I mean, it's arthroscopic surgery, basically. And we didn't lose a single tree on Kensington. I can't guarantee that's gonna always be the case, and Kensington's gonna be a little tighter, because the tree lawn is narrower between the street and the sidewalk, so hopefully-
Oakdale?
I'm sorry, Oakdale, yes, is the same. But, yeah, it's a very-
That was absolutely incredible. It was fast.
Yeah.
And it was fast.
Surgical kind of process. We have some challenges on this one. The water main that we're connecting into at the north side of the street is, is pretty much under the sound wall for 696.
Oh.
So that actually adds, the Kensington project was about 1.1 million, this is 1.4 million. Part of it is, this is a little, little bit longer and there's more houses, but also we have to deal with tying into a water main that's under a sound wall, and that requires some additional work to make sure that, you know, we don't collapse the wall. Yeah.
That's fun.
It'll be fun. They're all fun. We're having fun.
Sounds like it.
Have the waivers been updated? Are they gonna make a resident sign the similar kind of waiver?
We will consult with the contractor.
Okay.
If we, you know, we'll see if we can get rid of that very offensive language.
But that-
But again, we had zero issues with the Kensington project.
Right, right. All right, let's have a motion.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move to award the bid for the Oakdale Water Main Project to FDM Contracting, Inc. for the total amount of $1,439,594 and 25 cents.
Second.
All right. Any other comments? Let's have a vote.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. And on to the Wellness Center, we're at a vision bid.
Yes. Let me try to get my coughing out of the way before I start.
Okay.
Make me want water.
Stay hydrated. We have a bid before you in the amount of $160,775 prepared by Solomon Consulting Group. Solomon was the low-bid contractor for the DPW Building Project. This bid is presented as an extension of their work with that building project. This is similar to when Ustand used to be the city's general contractor. They were the low-bid project contractor for the Wellness Center construction in 2003. And then for a long time, when we had smaller projects, they would G C that for us. Same process here with Solomon Group. Our relationship with Ustand ended a few years ago. It becomes day, all those time depart ways. But with Solomon on board, Solomon is a fantastic contractor, and with them as a low-bid contractor for the DPW Building Contract, they prepared this bid as G C. So they bid this out to the subs and prepared this project. This project entails refreshing the Wellness Center, but also some additional items at the community center. If you've been to the Wellness Center, you've seen that the drop ceiling's been removed. So the intention is to replace all of the mechanicals that are above the ceiling, make it so that it looks good and intentional with that drop ceiling removed. That requires redoing all of the lighting and electrical work. As the project was being scoped, we also included an allowance for replacing all of the rubber flooring that is in the Wellness Center and also in the small room that was put in almost 10 years ago now. And it was fine, but it's, it's worn, it's weathered, it's difficult for Shawnee and Greg to keep it clean. It holds the salt, it's never really lost its rubber smell. So as we were doing this project, it was time to, you know, replace that as well. So that's just a straight allowance in the project budget. There's also some incluents, inclu-
Included.
I'm just gonna move on. Some, some things that are included for the big room, some maintenance work. There's some moisture coming through the wall or, that's created along that north wall. So treating that with a sealer so that we don't get that calcification coming through the wall and repainting that wall. The drywall that's along the east side of the room gets beat up. There's no really better technical term than beat up. So we're working with Patrick Thompson, who designed this room, the pavilions, the big room. We're working with them to come up with some sort of durable artistic finish for that wall. And then also to carry something underneath the kitchen window pass-through, because that also is drywall and gets beat up.
Just gets beat up.
So we're looking at some more durable, long-term solutions there. So those costs are included in this project as well. The intent is to get this going tomorrow, but I, I'm only half facetious about that. Our goal is to get the project wrapped by May 1, when everything begins at the community center for the summer. If we can't do that, then we'll be holding off and doing this late fall, after everything winds down. But as of today, we think we can get it done and get moving on it. So I have a meeting tomorrow with the design, with Patrick Thompson, who's doing the fit and finish, paint colors and some of the work for the big room, to run through some of those choices. And if approved tonight, we will be making every effort to get this going, to have it done by May 1. And I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but I think the foundation is also looking at using this as what they're funding for their, their auction, which allows us to do some of the extra things as we were working through it, to, you know, kind of take it to that next level.
Right.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions about this, about the project, about funding, about any of that.
Any questions for Jim?
In terms of the equipment, this is only the physical, so we're keeping the existing equipment that is still working and functioning.
Yes. One of the things is, you know, as we, we sort of did some, you know, some checking on this, we're getting rid of the TVs. So that's gonna make it look better. You know, the, the wiring comes down and is in those tubes, and it was, it just looked very tired and dated. Getting rid of those. But the machines themselves are still in good shape. A few years ago, we had been leasing all of those machines, and then at the end of that term, we bought them. So we're saving quite a bit of money just by buying the machines and not paying the lease price. And then with what we had been, we had been paying $21,000 a year in lease costs for all of that. So now we've just redirected that to replacement as needed. So that, that's something that's just now in the budget built in for a machine and equipment, maintenance or replacement. But yes, to your point, I think all of the machines are in good shape, they're all working well, so.
Well, and with those TVs, so now, so many people have their tablets and phones that they're using, so, and that, that tube is so trippable, too.
Yes, yes.
There's always a-
Yes.
That's very strange.
Yeah, when those TVs were put in, I mean, it was 12, 15 years ago, nobody had, nobody had-
Right.
-you know, every possible form of dopamine-hit entertainment known to man, like, in front of them. So they're really sort of redundant at this point. We've talked, we talked about maybe having some general TVs up there.
Put those a big game on.
Yeah, or something.
Pleasant Ridge City Commission Meeting.
Yes.
Right. And so that's something that we can add cheaply. You know, a mounting arm and a TV-
TVs are cheap.
Is a couple hundred dollars now.
Yeah.
With a stream, you don't even need to wire it, you know, you just get the streaming. So we're not gonna do that as part of the project, we're gonna wait and see.
Okay.
But if, if, you know, if there's a demand or if we hear about it, we can add that later.
So with the flooring, so there's new non-stinky flooring?
Yes, so that's one of the things we're working on. We have options and we're working with Shawnee and the design team to figure out.
That was wild.
Yeah.
Works best, yeah.
What are you gonna do with that stinky floor?
I don't know.
Do you have one option?
I, I put down mats like that in my garage.
Mm-huh.
So, yeah, especially someone that has a car, classic car, it's kind of nice to have.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, working out in the garage?
Yeah, I see no reason why we couldn't just make that available to the community to come grab the tiles.
Are they tiles? Is that what-
They are tiles.
They interlock.
They're glued, though, probably, right?
Um, yeah, I think so, but I'm not sure that they are. They're pretty heavy-duty.
Sometimes they stay in place just because, interlocking.
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's a demand, you know, we can make them available.
Keep it out of the way, Phil.
Well, in that room, it gets so much use, and just because of the type of use, it needs to be refreshed every, you know, 10 years or so, it just, it needs air.
Yes. Yes.
And also, I know we had talked about it, too, but in terms of the funding breakdown, you know, some of this, some of the money coming from the marijuana excise tax, and I know we had talked about it, so seeing a benefit from the marijuana and moving it over to a refresh-
Into health.
Into health, right, which-
Yeah, that was, that was also, we didn't, when we were scoping this project, that the marijuana funding we received this year, because we never know. It all comes from the state, and they just announce one day how much we're getting. And with two dispensaries being open this year, we got double the funding of last year. Unfortunately, the per dispensary funding did not decrease. So that was an unknown amount of money when we were scoping the project, and then we found out that, oh, okay, there's an extra $60,000 that we can put towards good use here.
And to, yeah, everyone's benefit, so.
Great. I had some other questions, but I'd forgotten. That sounds great, thank you. That's a great idea. It'll be interesting to see the durable finish on, for those walls.
Yeah, and of course, Patrick Thompson is taking care of that, so I'm sure it'll be great.
It'll be great.
But I can't wait to see their ideas.
Yeah, yeah. We're slowly but surely making our way through all of the buildings, getting all of the spaces nice.
Yes.
And this is one of them to do. All right, a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the Solomon Consulting Group Wellness Center bid in the amount of $160,775 plus a 10% contingency.
Second. Any other thoughts? Vote, please.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. On to the city manager's report.
Yes. I'll begin with one thing I forgot to mention.
Oh.
Is that this will require the Wellness Center to be closed for, we're thinking six weeks.
I'm changing my mind.
Fortunately, have you seen it outside?
I know.
Go for a walk.
Right. Winter is over.
Yes.
Knock on wood.
Yes, but it's a short-term loss, it'll be very worth it.
Yeah.
To Liz Flager's point about the 696 project, yes, we've been in contact with MDOT, we've been in contact with Oakland TSC, we're in contact with the project manager for the project. And, you know, I mean, yes, with the city, we can contact, but we get directed to the same place that any resident does. And the contact information is on the drivingoakland.com website. I would suggest calling the number that's there, the 248-930-1777 number that goes directly to an MDOT ombudsman, whose sole job is to handle damage complaints, issues with the project. In terms of, of the project, they've done I-75 through Royal Oak, Hazel Park, Detroit, all north. They've done 696 through east, all through Warren, Madison Heights. They've done a lot of projects replacing freeways with, that go through neighborhoods just as close to many houses as we have here. So yes, it is a loud disruptive process, but MDOT's done this in a lot of places and knows how to do it without creating actual issues. That said, if anything happens, please use that contact form. If there are issues getting follow-up, we're happy to also make contact and see what can happen. It is probably not a bad idea to video your house beforehand as documentary proof of any issues that exist. But, you know, we heard this issue when Woodward was redone the last time with the machinery. Fortunately, I guess fortunately, I don't know, it was good that we're getting the worst part of the project done right now, which is removing the old pavement.
I was surprised that there, because I fortunately get to drive that every-
Yes.
One way.
Yes.
It works.
And, yeah, and they're, they're running, I mean, so-
They went at it.[1641.83]
This will be the worst part of the process, breaking up the old concrete. Everything else, I mean, you'll feel some vibrations when they're doing things, but this is, you know, the heavy, kind of the heavy metal part of it, and hopefully over very soon. Also with this, we, in anticipation of this project beginning, we've had our traffic counter up on Woodward Heights. We had it up for most of the week before the project started, and then we've had, we've left it up since the project started. I haven't noticed or heard any issues with cut-through traffic or with travel patterns changing to the point where it's disrupting or being too disruptive, but we're measuring it. So we're seeing what the, what the impact is. And, you know, if anything needs to be done to mitigate any of those issues, but.
I would actually say it's actually quieter.
Yeah.
It's strange that it is working out the way it is, but I think in having made the East 10 Mile a service drive, and they've closed the stop signs and entrances off of 696.
Yes.
The flow of traffic along East 10 Mile is actually better. And it seems that at certain times of day, there's less traffic along Woodward, which is not what I would have expected.
Yeah.
And that's just anecdotal, but that's what it seems.
They've been sending me all different routes, or depending on the time of that I'm traveling back this way. So, and it has put me through a couple neighborhoods, but nothing has been intense yet.
Yeah.
I don't feel good for the folks on 8 Mile or 13 Mile. Those roads are definitely, yeah, I have a buddy that lives on 13 Mile, and it's just busier. But I think in our little area, it hasn't been as bad as it could have been.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
And I think the thing that we benefit from is that we're at the end of the detour. We're at the end of, you know, 696 is close eastbound, and we're at the very end of that. So people have found a different way of getting across that doesn't come through here. And then, you know, a lot of the, the traffic that's routing along the service drive is a little more local. And so, yeah, I think it's, you know, it's been interesting. It's been, it's been good that we've seen what we've seen so far.
Yeah.
Hopefully it continues.
And I'll reiterate what Jim said. If you live, you know, close to 696, just photograph everything. Keep a record for yourself. I know we mentioned it at the last city commission meeting, but we'll say it again. Just keep a record for yourself just in case. And, and then you've got it in the, in the event that you need it as something, if something is damaged.
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I had. Any questions about anything happening around town, or?
No.
No.
Yard waste pickup begins April 7.
I did look at my magnet as I was out there this weekend.
So March is the time of year, and, you know, we start to get out and do that final yard cleanup. But yes, bagged curb-side yard waste pickup begins April 7. You can always take them to the Sacra site, make an appointment, and take your yard waste bags there. It's a little bit of effort, of course, to get there, but.
Soon.
Soon.
Almost here.
Spring is coming.
Yes. Be nice when the road salt is
Yes, that'll be about
Need a good rain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be good, I can go up there if you want, but it might be good, I know there's, we had one neighbor who put out the yard waste bag, and, and I know it's the 7th, but it should have probably been picked up and just tossed in for the landfill. You know what I mean? Instead of, they let it sit there.
So that is in the contract, that it's, it's not legal to take yard waste into account, into the landfill?
Oh, is it?
Right, it has to go to a compost facility.
Yeah.
So the haulers can't do that. They can't intermingle.
Got it. Okay. Okay, I think we have hit the end of the meeting.
So one quick thing is the auction.
This will be other business.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
I was
We're on to other business. It's okay.
Sorry.
No.
Oh, okay, the Pleasant Ridge Auction is coming up.
Thank you.
That's why I was starting to look at the date. Someone did send me a text that said that the floors are glued down, but we'll see if they can be.
Will the work
They are watching.
Inside with the auction?
So the auction is May 17. And so everybody, you know, save the date, may save teeth for the Pleasant Ridge Foundation Auction, which has a fun theme of a cowboy theme this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then also, think about, you know, the auction, you know, the auction part of the auction is one of the important parts that helps them raise money. So everyone, think about, you know, getting together through your blocks and your different community groups and things like that, and donations that you can put together, baskets or fun events and activities. So it's time to dig in again. Spring is here. And March Madness starts soon.
Indeed.
That's all right.
Any other, other business?
One more thing is, the Women's Club actually does have a trivia night on Fri- Friday?
This Friday.
Which is
The 20th.
No, this Friday.
This Friday, the 14th.
The 14th. So even if you don't have a team for individuals, or if it's just a couple of you, we have some extra spaces at tables. So please think about coming out and playing fun trivia on Friday night. It's for the children. It's a good cause. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. I'm just gonna wait.
Yeah.
One more thing.
All right, I better adjourn before there's, you know.
That's right.[1778.91]